I'm Esther Mann from the Driven Club and we will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Esther Mann from the Driven Club.
Continue. First item of business, public hearing on the issue of the employment of Robin Crumple by the Southwest Licking Local Schools District Board of Education. I don't believe there are any speakers signed up, correct? So, we're good, right?
We're good.
Okay. Public participation.
No speakers.
No speakers. Okay. We need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed, please.
Motion to approve or to adopt the agenda.
Second. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Continue. We have some presentations tonight. The first is our Facility Task Force and I believe that's going to be Mr. Reesey.
All right, thank you. I had this opportunity to talk about something that our committee is really excited about and it's something our community during the last year. I've been lucky to be a part of the Facilities Commission or Task Force. It's a group of, I'd say, thirty, maybe a little more than thirty people representing parents, neighbors, teachers, administrators, community leaders, church leaders, some other community organizations like the YMCA have been involved in looking at our facilities as we wrap up this, our current building plan, looking at our enrollment and figuring out some directions we might want to consider going forward to tackle that. So, oh, that's me. Mine's the first name there. And then some of our friends from Garland Hill are here as well. They've obviously been great partners of the district for a long time and were instrumental in guiding us through this process to make sure we're making smart and data-driven recommendations to the district and to the community. So, their plan is really simple and makes a nice slide. Define, discover, and develop, right? You've got to find what your problems or your needs are, investigate, you know, what they are, and then develop some solutions for them. So, this first meeting was about a year ago and it was really interesting in that it was a clean sheet. And so, we had thirty or so people from all different perspectives tossing out what they thought our biggest needs were in the district when it comes to our facilities. And the word map you can see there, it's not comprehensive, but it is representative of a lot of what that first meeting was. It was these conversations. You can see the big parking word in the middle that came up a lot, which I'm sure no one in here would agree with. So, these just gave us some starting points. And then, once we figured out kind of where everybody thought we might need work, we assigned values to those different needs. So, in assigning values to those, you can see these three main themes started to pop out. That pink bar over on the right, enrollment growth in middle and high school grades, really came out of the data as a big need even as we come to the end of our current building plan. The need for a fieldhouse or community center, increased recreation and wellness space, both for our students and our larger community. And then that blue bar on the left, parking at the high school. Oh, I skipped one. There we go. Okay, so, looking at that first thing we mentioned, which was enrollment in the upper grades, you know, middle and high school grades. This shows, trying to see, okay. This is building capacity of our current list of buildings and then the ten, fifteen max and mature projections for enrollment at those grade levels. You can see in the elementaries, we are doing okay. We have enough room to get through where we think we will be at both max and mature enrollment in a long, long time, fifty-some years. But we do run short of space once we get up into the intermediate, middle, and high school grades. So, the proposed solution here, and something we'll recommend and we'll get into more details in a minute, is to add a new, you know, air quotes, middle school building holding grades five and six for our entire district, right? So, adding that capacity, you can see that gets us everywhere we need to be, all the way from K all the way up through twelfth grade. So, recommended plan came up to three parts. The first part, new five-six middle school building at Refugee Road. We'll show you that here in a minute. Part two, expansion and parking improvements at the high school. And then, part three, training facility and aquatic center in a really unique public-private partnership that will be exciting to talk about here in a few minutes. So, here are all of the areas that are covered by the recommendations we're talking about tonight. You see the star there in the big open field off of the Refugee Road end of campus. Our proposal recommends putting a new five-six building there that will serve five-six grades for the whole district. Those two stars over the side of the high school, which would show the addition that we're recommending there and then parking improvements. And then up in the top right corner, the addition of a community training facility and aquatic center. That's a mouthful. To increase those recreation and wellness spaces. And then the blue diamonds represent the necessary roadway improvements that are included as part of this recommendation. So, the new five-six middle school. You can see a better idea of the location there. The main entrance does come off of Refugee Road and then connects all the way back to Warrior Way. This is academic space for a thousand students with core spaces increased for up to twelve hundred students. So, looking at those projections we saw a few slides ago, this makes enough room for our fifth and sixth grade classes as big as we think the district is going to get once it hits those max enrollment numbers. This is a little bit closer look at the layout. You can see parking. This is a representative layout. The building's not designed, but this is pretty close to think what they would want to put there. It's a really nice new building that is done, I think, just as well as all the other new buildings in the district. And there's a rough breakdown of how the building could be situated. Okay, so, the cost, this shows you, this was not our Task Force's work. We're not numbers people. The Garland Miller guys did this. You can see that to build a building of that size, core space for twelve hundred, academic space for one thousand, comes to a little over seventy-seven million dollar project, all in. And that includes the necessary road improvements that I talked about for Refugee Road and Smoke Road. Okay? This is going really fast. If you guys have questions, feel free to stop. I was hoping Jeff would put the timer on, so I wouldn't talk too long. The second part of the recommendation, or improvements in the addition of the high school. If you'll remember, back in the 2017 building plan, the state, as an OFCC project, you have to use the state recommendations for projections. And we've known since then that these buildings were going to open probably too small and would need added on to eventually. At the time they were designed, the district did locally fund some changes to the high school that made it more easily extendable to what we thought was a more realistic enrollment number. So, you picture those academic wings that point there towards the corner of Warrior Way and Forty. Those were designed to just keep going. And so, the first part of the high school improvement tackles that. It adds that kind of already envisioned addition. Worth noting here that the mechanical systems, electrical systems, everything in the building were already designed for these additions. So, this is really just a build, plug in, and play. I'm sure it's that easy. It's just that you just put it up and it works. So, there were a few different options that we tackled on how to do this. Do we keep the wings separate? Do we connect them? And the solution, I think, is really neat. It gives us a lot of space that we need while still maintaining those two wings. So, on the first floor, the two academic wings will remain separate with access to that courtyard in between them. But on the second floor, that is bridged. So, you get more space, creates kind of a cool tunnel entry into that courtyard. Just look at all those beautiful new classrooms that we can fill with high schools. Okay? The other need at that end of campus that really came out in, I think, everyone's opinion during that first meeting was parking. There's not enough parking there. And I think we're running out of paper to print, "Don't park on the grass sides." So, the solution there is to build more parking. And so, this is what they came up with. I think that the Garland Miller folks said this basically puts parking spaces everywhere we can fit them on that end of campus. This also does add an entrance off of Smoke Road, which I think was necessitated by the number of spots. But that, I think, is nice in getting people in and out of there. And we can see everything in blue is a newly added parking area, which is much needed, especially if you've been over there on an event day. It gets very, very tight. Okay, so, this looks cheap compared to the new building. The total project cost estimate for this, the high school improvements, comes to just over thirteen million dollars, which does take us up to space for seventeen hundred students. And while you'll see in the table, technically, the total high school enrollment will get above that at some point. The way the high school is structured, there's never that many students in the building at the same time. So, as a committee, we're confident that this doesn't just get us through for now. It doesn't just kick the can down the road. This gives us all the space in the high school that we think we'll ever need. And before we move on, because this next thing is really fun and exciting, what I think is really unique, and I think the whole committee was excited about this, is that for the first time, I think, in our district's history, we can look at numbers and say, "We know how many kids we're going to have." When our district is as big as it's going to be, we know how much space we'll need. And if the district agrees with this plan and moves forward, we will have all that space, right? No group in seventy-two years of Southwest Licking Schools has ever said, "We're going to have all the classroom space we're ever going to need." I think that's a really cool thing to give our community and say, "We're in good shape," you know? So, that third need we identified through our work was increased space for recreation and wellness for our students and our community. Getting gym space is hard. If you've got kids and travel baseball, you're driving all over the place to the sketchy back alleys of Reynoldsburg for baseball training. There's just not enough space to do those kind of activities here. And so, these discussions started in our group as a pretty standard fieldhouse that other districts around here have. And through some really exciting and encouraging conversations with some community partners, mainly the Licking County Family YMCA, the opportunity for public-private partnership developed and that turned into what we have affectionately dubbed the Spear as a training facility and aquatic center. So, as you can see, this is a really impressive facility that houses on the dry side, three full-size multi-sport courts that can be configured for any number of things, a walking track, community weight room, student training rooms, golf simulator, esports spaces, flex spaces, locker rooms, turf area where batting cages can come down and be utilized for baseball and softball, all sorts of opportunities to really help all of our students, you know, train and get better in their sport. But then also, on the wet side, we actually have an indoor pool facility for use, not just by our swim team, but by our whole community through a partnership with the YMCA. And there you can see how this building would be situated. So, this is on the east side of Watkins Road, immediately across from the new Potaskoala-South Fork Elementary and next to Impact City Church. The district already owns that land. And if you look back behind there, and it's really, really small, you can see the little area behind the building that actually has a splash pad, a playground, a pavilion that would be open for the entire community. That's not a Y membership thing. That's not a school district thing. That's a community asset that everybody who lives here gets to use and enjoy before we talk about cost. We'll go over this. The way that this partnership has come together, if the district or the board agrees and wants to move forward with this, the YMCA is willing to sign a contract to manage and pay for this facility if we build it, right? So, how that would work is, you know, scheduling would be done to prioritize our students getting in there when our teams and our leagues need the space. But then, it would also be open to members of Licking County YMCA during the school day to go do swim lessons or water aerobics in the pool. He said they could set up, I forget how many pickleball courts on the sport courts, which he was very excited about, Adam from the YMCA. So, apparently, it's a big thing. And so, this facility would not just be for our kids and it wouldn't just be for Y members, having those different levels of access where everybody in the community has access to the splash pad and the playground and the green space outside. YMCA members have access to the pool and, you know, the indoor training areas, the sport courts, things like that. And then, having this facility for our students, there's nothing like it. I mean, it would really be a jewel for our community to have. It's something to be proud of. But what I think is important is when we get to this slide, it's not a cheap building to put up, but of the overall project that we're recommending, eighty percent of what we're recommending, the cost, is going towards classroom space that we need. And so, when we talk about this and our conversations always go right to that training facility, the Spear, it's really cool and it's a really cool thing, but it's really a small part of what we're asking for in the total project. So, you can see here, it's a fifty thousand square foot building, all in with the improvements. Comes to twenty-four million dollars. And they did break out the pool, just so you can see, the cost of that in the grand scheme of things is actually a lot less than I would have guessed it would be. So, these are all three things together. It's a total of a hundred and, under a hundred and fifteen million dollar project. It's not cheap, right? You're not going to shake your couch cushions out and get that. But I think, from the perspective of the committee, having that unique opportunity to say, "Our spatial needs for our district are taken care of" until all of us are gone and anything that comes after, it's really unique and it's cool to be able to be a part of it. So, this is the recommendation of our task force after a year of work. And this is what it comes to. Oh, and that's the end. Are there any questions?
These guys can answer. The budget for the addition of the high school, the Smoke Road entrance, that was a super big cost originally. I'm assuming that budget took in that cost.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, each piece could potentially have road impacts and all those budgets are in there for road impacts. Smoke Road would like to use a turn lane and that money's on there.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, Building Continuous Improvement Plans, Watkins Intermediate, please.
Good evening, Board of Education, Southwest Licking County, here, and community members. And thank you for the opportunity to present our Watkins Intermediate Continuous Improvement Plan. It's an honor to share the progress we've made along with our plans for continued growth. First, I'd like to highlight, which is not up here, our performance on the Ohio State Report Card. First, I'm proud that, to share their overall performance moved from a four-star to four and a half stars this past year. In our achievement score, we maintained four stars with a special highlight to our fifth-grade ELA performance, which exceeded the state's eighty percent proficiency benchmark. One of our proudest accomplishments is a significant increase in our progress category, moving from three to four stars. This measure reflects student growth from past performance and showed tremendous improvement. After analyzing our value-added data, we found that three out of five of our tested areas were in the highest band above expected growth, where our fifth-grade science growth increase compared to last year remains a focus area along with our fifth-grade math. Another major achievement was moving from four to five stars in the gap closing, a measure that evaluates how well we're meeting the needs of student subgroups. This demonstrates the impact of our targeted efforts to ensure all students succeed. These results are a testament to the incredible work of our teachers, support staff, and students. Our team's relentless focus on teaching and learning and supporting every student's growth has been remarkable. I also want to acknowledge two amazing assistants I have, Mr. Hammond and Mrs. Worrell, whose leadership and collaboration have been instrumental to our success. While these ratings reflect just one moment in time, they do validate that we're heading in the right direction. We'll now look at our building action steps, starting with our student experience. As part of our first strategy, I'm thrilled to share that Tyler Everett, a former football player at THE Ohio State University, part of the 2002 national championship team, has been working with us through the Driven Foundation Program. Over the past two months, Tyler, known as Coach Tyler by our students, has been leading a group of sixteen fifth-grade boys through an impactful character and leadership lessons designed by the Driven Program. This is the first year we've implemented a program tailored just to our male students. This is the, it's already made a remarkable difference. And to showcase this, I'd like to invite Tyler up front along with, we have three, three of our guys, of our Driven Group leaders to share their experiences. So, who better to speak about the student experience than our own Watkins Intermediate students, right?
Well, first of all, thank you, Board of Education, for having me tonight. Like Mr. Pratt said, I did play at THE Ohio State University, but that was just the beginning of, you know, what I wanted to do with my life. And that was to pour back in our youth. So, a couple teammates of mine founded the Driven Foundation, which was initially brought together to do football camps. But, you know, one day of a football camp, how big of an impact can you have on the youth? So, we started doing these leadership programs, which are eight-week programs. Each student gets a workbook to work in. There's a lot of different lessons in here. But we start every day out by saying what we're thankful for, if we want to forgive somebody for something, if we want to apologize for somebody for something. And then, we go through the lessons. So, part of it is, you know, getting these boys here to let you all know kind of what they took from it. And, you know, tomorrow, we have an assembly highlighting them as ambassadors of the Driven Program in front of the whole fifth grade. And we kind of do that standard with our programs. Ironically, when COVID hit, I was at the old school and couldn't finish the program. So, you know, I was blessed to be able to come back and finish this program. But like Mr. Pratt said, we have Eli, Liam, and Anton here to kind of, you know, give their take on what they, you know, took away from the program and, you know, you guys have at it. So, Eli, go first.
So, one thing I learned from the Driven Program is there's eight billion people in the world, only one of you. Everybody is different, so just be yourself and don't try to act like anybody else.
Awesome advice.
My favorite lesson I learned is life is like in a, choose your thoughts when you have a negative or distracting thought. Change your thought. You choose it.
Nice advice, man.
Something I learned in the Driven Foundation is your dash. The dash is the time between your born and death. You want your death to be, your dash to be remembered is a good thing. Cars, money, love, houses don't matter and all that matters is how you spend your dash.
Awesome. Thanks. That's just a little part of... That's just a small part of it. I mean, like, you know, we have these workbooks they're going to keep when they're done, so they can go back and look at, you know, what they wrote, kind of touch on what they said. We also have a page for goals. They write down about fifteen goals and dreams, anywhere from family goals, ethical, family, physical conditioning, things like that. And they write down a plan to reach those goals. So, they will have these books to reflect on as they get older. It may not happen next month, next year, two years from now, but maybe in four years, something will click. And maybe like I remember learning in Driven, they can look back in the book and say, you know, "I learned this lesson. I'm going to apply it to life." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, fifth-grade leaders, and thank you, Tyler. I told Tyler we were going to bring the boys here tonight and he volunteered. I didn't even ask him. I asked him to see if he wanted to. He wanted to be here, which is an amazing testament of who he is and what he does with our kids. So, that's obviously going to be the hands-down most exciting part of this presentation, let's be honest. So, we do have some PowerPoints to follow, so you guys feel free to stick around or this is your time. You guys can answer too. But thank you for coming. So, as part of strategy number one, we're proud to continue with year three of our WISs Clubs. These are teacher-created clubs designed around teachers' personal interests outside of the regular curriculum. So, this year, we've added some new exciting clubs to the lineup. We have American Sign Language, GimKit, Line Dancing, Rubik's Cube Club, Culture Club, Zen Club. You name it, I feel like we have it. The action step from our PBIS team is that we're incorporating, we'd like to, student-led clubs into this time. We're piloting the initiative with four fifth graders, Eli being one of them. That'll lead the Eli Effect Club the second semester. The Eli Effect has had a profound impact over the years. And with Eli being a part of this fifth-grade class, this club will honor his legacy and ensure that his values remain at the heart of our school community. As part of strategy number two, we're excited to revamp how we deliver SEL lessons, now led by our new school counselor, Alexa Tonsky. Instead of teachers facilitating an SEL lesson over, after the announcements, Alexa now delivers engaging lessons three days a week on our Warrior News. Each lesson focuses on one of our core principles of the Warrior Heart, honesty, empathy, accountability, respect, and teamwork, doing it together as a team. Additionally, we partnered with local community member, Dan Ortiz, who has created a captivating children's book series, The World of Socks. So, this series beautifully aligns with the Warrior Heart principles we have, adding new creativity and a relatable touch to our SEL efforts. Next, we're going to continue using our Stay in the Game attendance initiative. We started last year using resources from the Cleveland Browns. We'll see what happens tonight. And Columbus Crew. This program celebrates attendance success with brag tags for students and includes targeted support from Jeff Hammond, who works closely with a set of group of students who have taken an attendance pledge. Jeff regularly checks in with these students and creates tailored incentives to encourage and improve attendance. This proactive approach, along with, you know, many other things, we've seen a thirty-two percent reduction in absence intervention plans compared to last year where we are this year. Moving to strategy three, we've introduced a new action step focusing on staff engagement. This effort includes a partnership with Educate HX, an outside organization that specializes in helping schools embrace teacher engagement. Educate HX conducts surveys and facilitates meetings with our staff to identify key areas for school improvement. So, the two areas of the engagement were identified were ensuring teachers feel heard, if that makes sense, and fostering connections and sense of care among teachers. So, at our last staff meeting, we began addressing these priorities with actionable steps. We're committed to continuing this collaborative work to enhance these targeted areas because we feel by focusing on these needs, we aim to create a more supportive, connected, and engaging environment for our educators, which will ultimately benefit our students as well. All right, so, we're going to transition into our second and final part of our continuous improvement plan on student learning. Our first strategy is revamping our teacher-based teams, our TBT framework, centered on analyzing assessment data, instructional strategies, curriculum, and pacing. We've dedicated time before school and on professional development days that has allowed us to realign our curriculum with a keen focus on the OST. I've had the privilege of working with two of our content areas, fifth-grade math and science, and their progress so far has been fantastic. The intentionality and collaboration with our staff between these teams are paving the way for impactful student learning outcomes. Our next set of strategies emphasizes the impact of the implementation of the science of reading in our school. First, we've implemented the ninety-five percent Core Phonics program in fourth grade with teachers demonstrating exceptional commitment to delivering it with fidelity, even after busy days like field trips. The second, data revealed a significant need for an explicit reading intervention in fourth grade, leading us to restructure teams from two-to-three-person teams to provide UFLI interventions during, we have now a second wind block within our MTSS framework. Lastly, we've strengthened our special education services by investing in the OG practicum. We have five special education teachers going through that right now. And we restructured our SLD intervention specialist as being grade-level and content specialist, enabling more targeted support. These actions are driving meaningful reading growth and student success. And finally, we're becoming more intentional in leveraging the state resource restart to readiness to enhance both teaching and learning. All content areas have increased its use, giving students valuable exposure to state test format and equipping teachers with actionable data on alignment and performance. Beyond utilizing the full practice assessments, we've incorporated periodic checkpoints, which are in the program, to identify student strengths and areas of targeted intervention. are in the program, to identify student strengths and areas of targeted intervention. This purposeful approach ensures our instructional strategies and curriculum remain focused on driving, once again, student success. So over the past three years, it's been incredibly rewarding to witness the, the growth of not just our new teachers, but our veterans as well, and the leadership that they're displaying. As administrators, we're, we're excited to lead these, this professional development journey, but we recognize the significant impact of student growth and development comes from the collaboration and communication between our teaching staff and our support staff. Becoming a great teacher takes time, but we already have so many accessible, excuse me, exceptionable educators on staff, and we have just many more in the making. And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Wolfert on the boundaries update?
Do I just, can I use this thing? Awesome. All right, well, thanks for having me back. I'm excited here to tell you about our boundaries, and this time we don't have to go through all the demographics reports, so that's a positive there. So starting off with our current elementary boundaries. On the, on the left, this is a map of your current boundaries, and then on the right, we have our metrics. So with our metrics, if you look, I do want to point out, so Potaskolet Elementary currently does have a lower capacity than the new Potaskolet South Fork Elementary will, so our overall utilizations are going to change. But if you look at that first colorful column, the live-in utilization, this is showing the utilization of schools today using 24, 25 students. And then if we look at the future enrollment, these are the students that we are expecting to net from any new developments. So that future utilization column is showing if we made no changes today, we didn't build that new school, nothing happened, where we would be with our utilizations. And those show the live-in enrollment plus the future enrollment. As you can see, we've got a lot of overutilization, especially at Aetna, where a lot of those developments are pointed. Sorry, okay. The map on the left here shows the, the future boundaries, so the 2025, 26 boundaries. If you recall, I think earlier this year, I shared a set of boundaries with you as well. We have made one change to those, and I will point that out, just based on student enrollments and trying to get our sections right at every school. But overall, the boundaries are very similar. So the highlights of it, it does establish Refugee Road as a boundary between Aetna and Potaskolet-South Fork on the west side of the district. You see that nice flat line there between the white and the black? That is Refugee Road. It moves the areas immediately surrounding the new school in, into the school, increasing walkability, so everybody that is fronting Watkins Road south of Blacks Road would attend the new school. It pushes Potaskolet-South Fork Elementary further south to incorporate more developments that are currently slated for Aetna. If you remember the last slide, poor Aetna is going to get hit by a lot of, a lot of developments there. I think this is the most important part of this. Every change, every area that we have moved within this boundary process is moving into the new school. There are no domino effects moving some from Aetna into Kirkersville, Kirkersville into Aetna, no, everybody is moving to the new school if they are moving, which, which is a huge positive. I do a lot of these, and that is not always the case. And then, of course, everybody that's currently attending Potaskolet Elementary will move into the new school together, too. So Potaskolet-South Fork will just gain students from every boundary. Overall, we're moving 128K through two students. So the next couple slides just highlight each of the areas that are going to change between this year and next. The slide on the, or the map on the right here just kind of outlines each of the areas that are changing. Again, all of these are moving into the new South, or Potaskolet-South Fork Elementary. So the first section I want to highlight is the area right along Columbia Road. There's about a dozen or so parcels that currently are assigned to Aetna, but they exist on the other, on the north side of Refugee Road. So in order to make that line nice and clean, we moved those parcels in particular into the new Potaskolet-South Fork Elementary. This change in particular did not have an impact on students, but it gives us a nice, clean line. The next area is going to be the homes along, well, the homes north of Refugee Road, kind of along Creek Road and Smoke Road. This, again, would be moved into Potaskolet-South Fork Elementary. Again, the line on the bottom is going to be Refugee Road, so it's getting us to that line there. The next section, so this is, this is the area surrounding all of your campuses. Of course, pulling all of these students in increases walkability. So we pulled all the area surrounding the new elementary school in. And then on the bottom, you can see the subdivisions and complexes impacted. High Point is also in there, that's shown in red, that is because that's a development that has yet to yield any homes. So we're expecting that to come online at some point in the near future. It's in the, like, southwest corner of this, of that box there. Then this is that area that I was talking about, along Watkins Road, south of Blacks Road, you can see Blacks Road right there. This would all, again, be moving to the new Potaskolet-South Fork Elementary. Just so you know, every change that we have made so far is actually closer to Potaskolet-South Fork than it is to Kirkersville anyways, or Aetna Elementary. This change in particular impacts over Brook Estates and Rose, the Roseland subdivision. And then this last piece is the thing, is the one part that has changed from when I presented in, I think, April. So this is moving the Catalina Club Apartments, Legacy Estates, and the Villas at Four Farms condos into the new Potaskolet-South Fork Elementary. This was, this change was made over the summer to account for, number one, 24, 25 enrollment, because before this year, we were using 23, 24, as well as evening out the sections at schools to make sure we have an appropriate number of students per classroom and number of sections per, per grade. So like I said, this is the Legacy Estates area, and again, this would be, this would also be moving to Potaskolet-South Fork. And again, another area that is geographically closer to Potaskolet-South Fork than it is to Kirkersville. Well, I did not mean to do that. All right. So with that, we do have a school locator. We've had this, we've had this up for a while, but it does show the updated boundaries. Folks can go in and type their address in and see where they would be assigned, both currently and in the future. This will, we will certainly leave this up throughout the implementation process so that families know where they're going to be attending next school year. And with that, are there any questions?
No, this could not have been an easy task.
No.
We, we've been working on it for a couple years now, so we, we have put a lot of work into it, but I, I think we landed on the best possible outcome.
And this does allow for, obviously you had High Point in there, you had a few other places.
It has growth in each, has growth in each building, yes. And, and she, Karen actually did a voiceover presentation, so tomorrow we'll roll out the voiceover presentation. I'll put an email out, all district. We'll have the QR code on the website as well as social media, so as promised, in November, people will be able to start seeing where they're going to go to school next year.
And how, are we committed to this for like several years then? Or would we need to look at redistricting?
No, we, the numbers are not on this, in this presentation, just because it's not applicable to all the families that see it, but we have ample room for growth. Off the top of my head, I want to say maybe 160, 170 kids in South Fork, probably close to 200 Aetna. Obviously, it's going to be the smallest one because it has the most growth coming. Kirkersville, probably 150, so we're going to be good in the elementaries, yes. Those are, those are roundabout numbers, yeah.
And in all honesty, the, like, the future utilizations are probably worst-case scenario because you'll have homes declining at the same times homes are coming online. So it, it'll, like, more than likely, there will be some offsetting that happens with that as well, but there is definitely room, room for growth. We made sure of that.
Well, I think the key point for families is every, every change is geographically closer to the school child's going to go to.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to be upset by the new boundaries.
And if you're moving, you're moving into the very brand-new.
Yeah, exactly, a really, really nice new building.
Really, really nice. Not that the other ones are not.
No, they're very nice as well.
They're pretty nice, too, but, yeah.
And kudos to you for, for putting that school in the exact place it needed to go as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Request to speak, Teamsters, Southwest Looking Education Association. Approval of minutes, we need a motion to approve the October 17th.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. We have personnel consent? Nope, we have a report from the treasurer, financial report, we need a motion to approve.
Motion approval.
Second.
Pretty quick, just a, a big thing, fairly routine month. The really big thing is we got our second income tax settlement, and it actually came in lower than we expected. We expected about a 7.3% increase, it only came in about 2% increase. It's kind of odd, is the estimated taxes and like withholdings from paychecks actually exceeded the 7.2, but the portion that's related to like late tax returns, old money due was way under. So it's just bounced, that just bounces up and down, but it's still early, we still have two more settlements coming in, but at least this was still 2%, 2% higher than we got last year. So it was still an increase, just not as much as we expected. Other than that, it was a fairly routine month. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Pratt?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Personnel consent calendar, A through N, motion to approve, all or one of those? Motion to approve, six, A through N?
Second.
So just a couple of things to point out. The retirement age temporarily, or age, years of service temporarily has changed to 33 from 34. So we will see a couple additional retirements, and I think a couple more of those we'll, we'll see to come. So just kind of be on the lookout for that, and then they'll decide in the spring, or so they're saying right now, if that will stick, or if they'll, if that's only going to be a three-year trend, so more information at that at a later date. You'll also notice I and J, we have, we've adjusted the bus monitor salary schedule by a dollar an hour. We have also added a substitute bus driver stipend. If you drive for 60 days, then you'll get a stipend of $175. So again, trying to incentivize drivers needing subs and making sure our kids can all get to school. And then K, the wrap-back requirement, that's, that was a change as well in our requirements by law for our nonlicensed employees, so they need a background check. They've already had a background check, so we're going to cover the cost for them because we don't think it's fair to ask them to pay twice, just because they've changed their mind on the requirements. And I think everything else is fairly standard. Unless you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We have some additional personnel, seven, A through D, and a motion to approve.
Motion approval, seven, A through D.
Second.
Question? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Abstain? Business items. Quite a few, I think we may want to take some of those separately, so how about, or we can motion to approve and then discuss?
Motion approve, eight, A. Can I pull out policies?
You can do a separate vote, yeah, these, these are usually one by one, but you can choose just to vote on one, what, one of the policies that's included. Yeah, I think it'd be a change to the agenda, but you could pull it out. I guess probably need a second on that, or unless everybody's okay with the change to the agenda, to make a separate item by itself.
Which one are you pulling out?
I want to pull out the JEFB.
So your motion then is for, motion approval, eight, A with the exception of?
Yes, okay, yeah, can we do that?
I was just thinking legislatively, what would be the?
Create a, another eight for that one?
JEFB. What was that, Kathy?
I was going to say, and then we'll, and then create a separate line for that?
Or whatever.
Yeah, the next one could be to address that one.
Perfect. So any, did we get a second on those?
No.
No.
Second.
Okay.
There we go.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. And now, a motion to approve the second reading of JEFB?
Okay, I'll, motion approve, motion eight, A being JEFB?
I'll second that. Discussion? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
No.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
All right. Motions for eight, B through D. Make a motion for that?
Seven.
Second. So I can run through them real quick?
Yeah.
So Public Library Replacement Board members, that's pretty standard. There is an overnight trip request for the wrestling team, and then also one for cheerleading. I did want to point out, for the cheerleading team, they are asking to fly, so, I mean, they are going to Florida, but I wanted to make sure that the board saw that in their request, and that, that you're willing to support them doing that. The costs will come to fundraising and/or parents as well, so. Just want to make sure you're aware.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. All right, how about, can we do, you want to do E?
Eight, E through G?
G, yeah. Yeah, because we can talk about it.
Go ahead.
Motion eight, A through, eight, E through G, to approve. I'll second that.
So I was going to have Melissa come up just for a few minutes, if you don't mind, to talk a little bit about the curriculum.
ORC requires that districts adopt, purchase, distribute, and provide professional development on approved core curricular materials in K5 English Language Arts and reading intervention during this school year. As a reminder, we are in the second full year of implementation of 95% phonics in K3, and year one of implementation of the program in fourth grade for the foundational skills component of reading. So it's time for us to add the K5 Language Arts component, which means explicit instruction in vocabulary, reading comprehension, and writing. Over a period of many months, a team of teachers and instructional coaches has reviewed three programs, and I am pleased to report that in October, 100% of teachers we met with selected HMH Intereading as their preference. It should be noted that we have used HMH at the high school level for several years, and we're in the first year of implementation at the middle school. And the feedback we've received so far from the middle school is positive, particularly regarding the writing component. So just to give you a little bit of an overview, HMH Intereading is a comprehensive ELA program for grades K through six, designed to develop students' reading comprehension, vocabulary, writing, and critical thinking skills. It incorporates research-based strategies and scaffolds to support multilingual learners. Intereading includes strategies for understanding both fiction and nonfiction texts, close reading practices, and explicit vocabulary instruction. The program also covers writing instruction across, across different genres. It includes grammar and conventions practice, as well as speaking and listening activities. The program includes a variety of digital and print resources, such as interactive digital components, online resources, and print texts to support both independent and guided reading. By combining these elements, HMH Intereading aims to create a holistic approach to literacy development, guiding students from foundational skills to advanced comprehension and critical analysis. To promote the holistic development, the program integrates social-emotional learning themes, as well as cross-curricular connections. It uses a variety of assessments to track student progress and provides tools for data-driven instruction. It also offers a blend of digital and print resources to support reading. We are also proposing to purchase two additional components to the program. One is Waggle, which is an adaptive learning platform that supplements the program. It, it incorporates gamification elements to keep student, students engaged, and it provides immediate feedback to help them learn from their mistakes. Teachers are able to use the platform to monitor student progress and adjust instruction accordingly. The activities align with state standards and focus on foundational skills, comprehension, vocabulary, and critical thinking. The second piece that we are recommending adding onto the program is Writeable, which is a web-based writing platform that begins in second grade. It's designed to support writing instruction, practice, and assessment for students using the program. It is a structured approach to writing, providing pre-built prompts and assignments aligned with various writing genres. I am very pleased to recommend the adoption of HMH Intereading for grades K through five for an initial period of three years. If the board agrees to move forward with the contract, the plan would include the delivery of teacher materials in late February, and the first phase of teacher training would occur in mid-March, allowing teachers to experiment with the materials if they choose during the fourth quarter or after state testing. Any questions?
Do we have enough?
Do we have enough Chromebooks and whatnot in the elementaries for students to fully, for, for this stuff to be fully accessible to the students?
We sure do.
Okay.
And even though the materials are available online, the purchase does include individual student books. They look like a typical ELA textbook, but they are workbook-based. So each, each student will have their own throughout the course of the year.
And I just wanted to add on that. I was present for the presentation by the coaches and some staff members. And I was somewhat blown away. And Mr. Toy could be a spokesperson for WAGL. I think he wants to be, but you know. It was very impressive from everyone, so.
Thank you.
And then the school calendar. So there's two, the 25, 26, and the 26, 27 school calendar. Trying to get a year in advance beyond next year, so to help our parents out and families. So we'll try that. Not saying that there might not have to be tiny amendments along the way, but we think we've got a pretty great calendar. We did work in collaboration with the union on that as well. And then lastly, I think for this one motion is the clever touch. So unfortunately, the new South Fork building was equipped with BenQs, which is a different interactive display. And Jeff had expressed some concerns with two separate entities for our tech guys working with them as well as our teachers. So we are basically selling the BenQs we own. And then we are purchasing clever touches. So then the building will be equipped like all the rest of the schools.
Do you want to talk about those real quick, Jeff?
Yeah. Effectively, the BenQ displays and the clever touch displays are somewhat similar in what they provide, but the software stacks are different. And we felt that as far as the teachers go, it would be kind of unfair to say, you know, here's two elementary buildings that have one piece of technology. Here's another one that has something totally different. So good luck sharing lesson plans, good luck sharing knowledge and experience and pretty much everything they've learned with the clever touch board. So we've been talking to Mr. Jones and Mr. Perkins. We kind of came up with a plan. And I've managed to sell 10 of them to another district and kind of found uses for 13 more. So I've got about 15 left to move. And at that point, they allowed me to request that we move forward with the purchase of clever touches. So we have them, they're ready to install in South Fork.
Can you talk about the upgrade to it?
Oh, yeah. Getting into the weeds a little bit, one of the reasons we really wanted these boards is they actually have an upgradable android module in them. So the first rounds of boards we bought, it's kind of built into the board. So as those boards age, eventually the computer that's inside of them will eventually become too old and too slow to really run technology. We'll have to replace the entire board with these going forward. We'll only need to replace that module. So as long as the displays don't fail, we can continue to use them for 10, 15 years down the road. So it should actually extend this investment out to further. Any questions? Thank you.
We're good. Thank you.
All right. Any questions on any of those items? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
All right, how about our last three items? Together, so how about a motion to approve 8H through J?
So moved. Rick?
Sorry to make you that. So these are free, the three resolutions to, first, the first action of the bond issue is to determine necessity. Once, if the board approves it, then I'll go to the county auditor, get a estimated middle rate for that, for the bond issue, and then we come back next meeting and pass second resolution. Then it goes to board of elections. So it's kind of the process. So here's the first one. We are asking for $115 million. You saw with 114, 906, rounded to $115 million. The second one is a reimbursement resolution. We don't know if we need this, but if we need to start paying architects or anything else after the bond passes, but before we issue the bonds, this allows us to get reimbursed for making those purchases. So it just, and then the second one, the third one is state consent. We have a debt limit that we can issue and we're at that. There's ability to go above that through special, you know, consent from the state. And we have plenty of room for it. So this is to allow basically us to ask for that consent. And usually it's always guaranteed, you know, basically just a formality to allow us to exceed our debt limit, local debt limit, to issue these bonds. So all three related to the bonds.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
I do have a question, but I wasn't going to change my vote. Are we, do we know if that's like 37, 36, 35?
Oh, I should, yeah. I forgot to take, it's 35 years is the max we go on this one.
Thank you.
It's, that's determined by the building and all the other things. And our state, our attorneys, brick and neck, they're calculating, that's the maximum we can go with the bond issue. I apologize.
Okay, no worries.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, nine multiple agreements, A through I?
Motion nine, A through I. Second.
Okay, we'll just kind of run through these, bouncing back and forth between Rick and I. So the first one is an agreement for a translation service we utilize for some of our students and families. The second one is an agreement for our domain at Pataskala Bridge Academy. So that's also needed. Go ahead, Rick.
The third one is related to the restrooms at the new athletic facility. We have to pay a tap fee to Lincoln County Water and Sewer District for water and sewer, $38,000. We had much choice if we want to put the bathroom in. At hotels, we had to, so, yeah, very high tap fees.
Yeah, it is.
D is Amendment 30 with our Millers provide some architect services for the right turn lane that must be installed there at Pataskala South Fork before the building's allowed to open. Originally, we would try to go through the contractor to do that. It's a dindun. It just didn't work out. So we ran to go through a full bid process for this right turn lane. E is Lawhorn Associates. This is basically to, kind of like we had did for the new high school in West, is to go through and do a cultural survey. This is on the land where the new 56 building, we're trying to get ahead of the game. And so get them done, get, do the survey, make sure everything's good and clean, and then allow us to keep moving at the bond, when the bond actually passes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
When we did the high school, the new high school, didn't we start with one and then move to a different company?
Yeah, this is the second company.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, we made that very clear, yes. So this is the second company.
So F and G are contracts for, well, one contract, one contract addendum for our students. And one is to add an aide and then one is for the student outside placed. You want to do H? You can do H.
Yeah.
I'll do I.
So basically, this is, for the past several years, I've been doing E-rate. Obviously, I have a couple of years to retire. And we talked to Lack and they recommend a consultant in a lot of school district. Like two, this one uses like 200 school districts. They do E-rate consulting services for us. So we want to enter into agreement with them to do category one, which is internet. And category two is like internal connections, servers, so forth, and maintenance agreements. Very reasonably priced. I think it's like $900 a building to do everything related to E-rate. And then again, I mean, it's, it could be up to $100,000 in reimbursement at least. So you always want to make sure you do it right. So I think it's definitely a good investment for a very low fee.
And then the last one is a, a three-year contract with Woolbert to continue working with them on our updated enrollment projections. And I think obviously that's extremely valuable and has been very helpful for us in this district as we're growing.
Is the cost there been consistent or has this gone up?
So last time, three-year agreement was 198.
Yes, I would say.
So this is only $20.
I was going to say slightly.
The 20, 20, slightly, so.
Okay.
And they, and they'll, regardless of, there's no like minimum, they'll, or maximum, they'll meet with you. I mean, we've met a ton on South Fork. They're, they're really great and very flexible and willing to help and.
Yeah, I was just curious what the difference was, so.
Any questions?
Nope.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Treasurer's items, motion to approve 10A through C. So moved.
Second.
I know this is a section everybody was waiting to get to, I know.
Couldn't wait.
They couldn't wait. So obviously, A is donations with thanks. B is a five-year forecast, so basically, quite go through it quickly. Couple of things, you know, revenue estimates for property taxes that continue to grow. We have not received the new valuations for tax year '24 that's collected in '25. We have not seen those yet. Again, so what I have in here are basically still estimates and we can adjust it as we need to. Income tax, again, continued growth. Really, the one big impact is school foundation, which is a big number for us. Last year was 192, this year projecting 187, and then next year projecting $15,000 because of our large growth in valuation. There is a local share and it's, it's basically a certain percentage of your property valuations and a certain percentage of the income. So, you know, we have like $938 million coming off and then probably 1.5 billion jumping on. So it's going to really have an effect. We are what's considered a formula district, but we do have a guarantee. We can't go below like 14 something. Hopefully, with the new state budget for '25, '26, maybe they'll rate, move that guarantee up a couple of years. If it does, then we'll be in really good shape, $19 million or $18 million. But we probably won't know that until like June of next year. So that's the one big up in the air is really school foundation. We pretty much have it flatlined at 15 million, hoping, being very conservative because we don't know what the state's going to do with the new funding formula, if they're going to fully implement or they're going to change it. Staffing-wise, basically two, 10 new teachers a year. I think four new aides, four aides, and bus monitors, a bus, a bus driver just in there in case we need it. So overall, it's just fairly, you know, we're doing really well. We're projecting a positive cash flow for the first three years. Again, four or five, which is really out there, we're starting negative cash flow. Just means we're spending more than we're actually receiving. We do have the cash balance to absorb that. But you're talking about one example, $161,000, and it jumped 2.4 million. So that tells you, next year, it may be $5 billion, $5 million under. So we got to just keep an eye on that as we move forward. And hopefully, the big thing is hopefully if the school foundation comes in higher than anticipated, that will be the biggest help for us.
Right.
And then last one is the statements of purpose. Just getting those in as they are, they're brought to us. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Great, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
So the first thing I wanted to share is not one of your handouts, but just in Dr. Ball's in the audience. But Dr. Ball and her eco warriors, the first big haze of trees have been planted. If you've noticed those on 40, so. They look really, really nice. There will be a slight adjustment tomorrow because they planted, they, with plan, but trees in front of where the big warrior is on Route 40. So we're moving those six trees so they won't block that. Because as they grow, right now, you can see it, but they're going to get bigger and bigger. So those will be, they're coming back out tomorrow to adjust those for us. But they look really nice and the kids helped today in the freezing cold weather. So they were out there working hard. So I wanted to give them some recognition and definitely thank them for a truly, really incredible out-taking they did. And I think it's going to be beneficial for years to come in the district. Then I wanted to point out our enrollment currently at 5126. So I wanted to tell you, we had from, if you, if you look from May, close of school till November of this year, we have 111 new students, 70 from August to November this year, just so you can kind of see the projections. We, we are 12 slots, or 12 students shy of our prediction from Woolbert for where we'll be this year. So we'll see how the next few months go. That will be interesting because as I've shared before, they've always been within the 99% accuracy. So it'll be interesting if we go over and some things may level out in coming months as well. So I will keep you apprised as how that's going, but did want to share the current enrollment. And then Jeff, do you mind putting up the compass? Please. And then here's the compass. You'll notice on the top, I don't care how you put it, either way is fine. Oh, that's good, that looks good. Yeah, so you saw when Karen presented this exact chart. So I'm sharing this tomorrow with our community. It'll go out with the, actually, the, the boundary changes. So just giving them the visual of the capacity at an elementary of 129 and then, you know, emphasizing what that South Fork building is going to do for us in accommodating up to 800 students. It's, it's going to be, you know, crucial at our elementary level. So definitely want to get that information out. And then if you want to roll on down, two fun facts, another development. I like to share those each month. Bryn Mawr Crossing down on Watkins Road, 42 unit apartment. That is not what it looks like. I have no idea what it looks like. So I mean, I just picked something off a camp, but I could not find what it's going to look like. And I, I asked some of our city members and that's not, we don't have that yet. So regardless, it's coming. They're moving dirt as we speak, so.
Is this off of Watkins and Broad?
And Broad?
Yeah, correct.
At the corner?
Yep.